Good afternoon. The time is now 2:05 PM on May 23rd, 2023. I'm Trenae Sriggs, School Board Chair, and we will begin today's School Board, School Board, School Board meeting with a closed session. Clerk Toni Otto, can you please read who is in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the Holland Road Annex Einstein Lab is Chair Riggs, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Ms. Manning, Ms. Martin, and Ms. Melnick.
Okay, thank you. We have, our Vice Chair is out sick. Our two members are, one is out with a husband sick, another is out on personal. And then, one is on his way. So he will be here within 30 minutes. But we're going to get started. So I'm going to ask Ms. Melnick to take over the duties of the Vice Chair today for me, please. And so will you read into closed session? First, I need to ask for a motion and a second.
Well, I'll move.
Yes.
I move that the School Board recessed into closed session in accordance with exceptions to open meeting laws set forth in Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1, 7, and 8, as amended to deliberate on the following matters: Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of any public body, and evaluation of performance of departments or schools of public institutions of higher education, where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals; consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable bias to believe, basis to believe, will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter, and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter, namely to discuss A: Appointment of citizen members to School Board Citizen Committees effective July 1st, 2023; B: School Board Attorney's Evaluation; C: Consultation with Legal Counsel.
Okay, Ms. Melnick has made the motion to go into closed session. Do I have a second? Ms. Brown, okay. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we have seven ayes. The motion did pass.
We're now in closed session.
Whereas the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this School Board that such meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge: One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies; and Two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
No, I need a motion.
A motion. Motion made.
Second. Okay. So the motion made by Mrs. Anderson to go out of closed and seconded by Mrs. Manning. Yes, I need a vote. All in favor, raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we have eight ayes. The motion did pass per certification of closed.
Thank you. And because I am the chair, I'm going to give us five minutes to get up and go to the restroom. Thank you, guys.
Same. I have to do that, too.
Good afternoon. I am Trenae Sriggs, the School Board Chair, and the administrative informal and workshop session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia is hereby convened at 4:09 PM on this 23rd day of May, 2023. Members of the public will be able to observe the School Board meeting through live streaming on schoolboard.vbschools.com/meeting/live, broadcast on VBTV, Channel 47, and on Zoom. Thank you to those that have joined us in person and online. Madam Clerk, will you please announce those School Board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the Holland Road Annex Einstein Lab are Chair Riggs, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Ms. Manning, Ms. Martin, and Ms. Melnick. And presently on Zoom is Ms. Owens and Vice Chair Weems.
Remote participation for School Board members in accordance with School Board Bylaw 1-36D, a School Board member may participate remotely in a School Board meeting when notice has been provided to the School Board Chair. And the remotely participating School Board member notes the reason for remote participation and the location from where the School Board member is participating. For today's meeting, I have been notified that the following School Board members are participating remotely. Jessica Owens, can you state the reason for your remote participation and where you are participating from?
Sure. I'm in White Plains, Maryland, because of a medical situation with my husband.
Thank you. Carolyn Weems, can you state the reason for your remote participation and where you are participating from?
Yes, I'm Zooming from my home. I'm sick.
Thank you. Jennifer Franklin, can you state the reason for your remote participation and where you are participating from?
Currently, Madam Chair, Ms. Franklin is not online via Zoom.
Okay, thank you. She told me that might happen as well. Okay, so we're going to start with School Board Administrative Matters and Reports. Does anybody have anything they want to share? Okay, so I want to share something before we start. During the meeting tonight, as we all know, as the chair, I preside over the meeting, okay? And I intend to listen to every person that speaks tonight very carefully and want to hear everything they have to say, like I know you all want to do, too. So I want everyone to support me in being able to see that people are staying with the decorum by Bylaw 147, and I will be supporting that as well, and I will be looking for that decorum as well. I am not there to judge if they're using their First Amendment rights or not. None of us are. That is the court of laws. So I do want to let you guys know that I will be very actively listening to our participants tonight. Okay? Thank you. All right, we're going to start with the late action regarding the new assignment of the PPEA, planning advisory team for Williams Elementary School and Bayside Sixth Grade Campus, planning advisory team. Kim Melnick is going to replace Jessica Owens, and the reason being is Jessica has decided that she cannot attend all of those meetings, and she asked would I choose someone else. Mrs. Melnick had asked after we announced the first group of people that were going to represent these committees, how I chose them. She seemed to be interested in it, and that is the reason why Mrs. Weems and I talked about it. We discussed it, and so she'll be able to be at those meetings as it is. Tomorrow night is one of our meetings that Stacy will not... Stacy, there, it came back on. Stacy, Ms. Martin will not be able to attend because she will be speaking at our GED graduation as the keynote speaker. Congratulations. And so, and Jessica, Mrs. Owens obviously would not have been able to be at tomorrow's meeting as well. So it has worked out. Mrs. Melnick will be able to attend that meeting to have somebody represent us in the committee. So I just wanted everybody to know the reason for that choice. Any questions on that? Okay. Yes, Ms. Anderson?
So I realize that there, just realized that there is a meeting for the Princess Anne PPEA project on June 1st, and I will be out of town. So I will need someone to substitute for me on June 1st, and it will be at Princess Anne High School in their library.
Do you have your time? I mean, I can get it, but did you know it offhand?
I don't know. I think it was 2:30.
Mrs. Weems, and you are the representatives for that, right?
Yes.
Okay. So if she can't be there, I'll see if I can find somebody. If I can, it'll be me. Okay? Okay. Because I do want to attend some of these. It's just I haven't been able to, not be able to get there because of all the other things I'm attending.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to go to that if I can. I might have to get back to you whether I can.
Okay, thank you, David. I'll put your name down. Thank you. Mr. Culpepper, I appreciate that. Okay, so we're going to start with B: Your Voice Enhanced EIP Meetings. Mrs. Sorry, one more thing. Forgot to remind you that the committee assignments, School Board members' new committee assignments are going to be discussed in June. So be looking at these committees, at what you would like to, if you'd like to stay on your committee, what you want to do, okay? Share with me your interest, with me and with our Vice Chair, your interest, okay? All right, Ms. Woodhouse.
Thank you. And good afternoon, Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, School Board members, and Dr. Spence. I am Cheryl Woodhouse, Chief Human Resources Officer. We are here this afternoon to present to you the outcome of the Your Voice Enhanced Employee Input Process Meetings. Before I turn it over to Ms. Edie Rogan, Director of Employee Relations in the Department of Human Resources, we do want to give a sincere appreciation to all of the departments who collaborated with us on this work and to all who were able to attend the Employee Input Process Meetings. And so with this time, without stealing any of her thunder, I will turn it over to Ms. Edie Rogan. Thank you.
Good afternoon. As Ms. Woodhouse said, my name is Edie Rogan. I'm the Director of Employee Relations, and I will be presenting the results of this year's Your Voice Enhanced Employee Input Process.
Welcome, Ms. Rogan.
Thank you. Because we have several new members of the School Board who may not have been here and not familiar with Employee Input Process and its history, we're going to start by giving you a brief recap. Prior to 1999, the Division had what we referred to as Meet and Confer. That process recognized three categories of employees. The first category was made up of teachers, nurses, interpreters, teacher assistants, psychologists, social workers, and custodians. The second group was made up of bus drivers and bus assistants. And the third group was security and clerical personnel. Each of the three groups had up to five administrators selected by the superintendent to meet with five employee representatives. Employee representatives were from three associations recognized, and those were the VBEA, clerical, and bus drivers. However, at least one representative was a non-association member. The scope of the discussions in those groups centered on terms and conditions of employment and MOUs, which is Memorandums of Understanding, which were developed each year for each employee group. This resulted in different procedures for different groups. For example, the Division ended up with six different sick leave banks with six different sets of rules. So obviously, that caused a bit of an issue. In 1999, Meet and Confer was deemed to be collective bargaining, which was not permitted in the state of Virginia. So in its place, employee input meetings were established. These were informal meetings held with eight identified employee groups. Those groups were instructional, teacher assistants, specialists, custodians, administrative support services, bus drivers and bus assistants, clerical, and administrators. A total of 21 meetings occurred each year between October and November. Afterwards, an issues review team would be formed for each employee group, and those representatives would meet with human resources to prioritize their items. Recommendations were then made to senior leadership, and if approved, were included in the superintendent's estimate of needs. Unfortunately, attendance was minimal at the employee input meetings. So in the 2006, 2007 school year, in addition to the employee input meetings, Division added a web-based survey. The survey was more efficient and yielded greater results, so it became the means for employee input. And to give you an example, while Meet and Confer consisted of 15 employees representing three employee groups, and the employee input meetings had consisted of eight employee groups, an average of participation of 4.5% of employees in the Division, the web-based survey was able to reach 50% of the employees, and we had a 50% response rate to those. The survey occurs in alternating years with instructional climate surveys. Alternating years for the survey allows administration time to analyze the findings, direct items to the appropriate subject matter area experts for discussion, develop strategies, and implement changes based on the feedback of the survey. So that's why we do it every other year rather than every year. The survey also allows for participants to remain anonymous and gives us the ability to sort data and make data-driven decisions. It also provides several sections for employees to get individualized feedback if they so After 14 years of using the survey method to obtain employee input, the School Board requested an additional means to reach employees. So with significant input from School Board employee members, including Mrs. Beverly Anderson and Jennifer Franklin, as well as Ms. Lanetti, our School Board Attorney, employee input meetings were reintroduced in 2022. This year, there were five division-wide meetings held, and the following slides will discuss the results of those meetings. Between November and January, there were three face-to-face meetings and two virtual meetings held. In addition, a special session was offered to maintenance services employees at their work site. As you can see from the chart, each face-to-face meeting had capacity to accommodate 150 employees. Virtual sessions could accommodate up to 200 employees, and all 885 seats were available. Registration for all sessions opened on October 25th and closed one week prior to each session so that HR could determine the staffing needed to facilitate the small group discussions that were to occur. Based on projected attendance, between five and 11 staff were present to facilitate each of these meetings. And we like to thank the Office of Professional Growth and Innovation, as well as the Office of Planning, Innovation, and Accountability for their assistance in these efforts. We could not have done it without their support. With 885 seats available either by face-to-face or virtual, only 208 employees registered, and less than half of those attended the meetings. Actual attendance per meetings ranged from eight to 30 employees. In total, 97 employees attended a session. So based on the same number that we use to calculate survey responses, which is 10,000 full-time employees, this indicates that less than 1% of our employee population opted to participate in this method of input. And while it could be seen as negative, we actually see this low turnout to be seen as a positive. Rather, it indicates that our employees feel like their voices are already heard by our administration, but they have multiple avenues to provide feedback already. That's through teacher forums, Let's Talk, Ask the Superintendent, climate surveys, as well as specific forums on topics such as diversity, which you'll hear from the next speaker, and school safety forums provide a wide array of opportunities for our employees to communicate with administration. So after the meetings concluded, we sorted and organized the feedback items into categories in a similar fashion to what is done with the Employee Input Survey. Categories were broken down into the following: Leave and Calendar, and this included both the school calendar and the employee calendar; Compensation, Benefits, and Staffing; Curriculum and Support; Efficiencies, Supplies, Technology, Equipment and Buildings; Performance and Professional Development; and Leadership, Communication, and Culture. The comments were also separated by the glows, and this is what the things that employees like and what to have us continue doing, and grows. This is where improvements could be suggested. The small group discussions yielded a number of both grows and glows responses. In addition, participants also completed individual feedback forms at the end of the sessions, and 42 of the 97 participants also filled out those individual surveys. More than 150 comments or bulleted items were collected in total. The items with the highest agreement included Wellness Leave, in which 64 participants agreed they valued; Reduced Insurance Premiums, again, 50%, 50 people in attendance agreed with that, sorry. 50 employees stated they appreciated the bonus incentives and the work the Division is doing to increase our salaries; the number and placement of staffing days; the winter break for the 12-month employees was appreciated; and the Division's wellness program were all other glows that we received. And here's a sampling of some of the individual comments made by either the groups in their small group sessions or by individuals that they put on their feedback forums. As stated before, the recent bonuses and the lower premium costs were mentioned multiple times, lower health premiums, a few people said, "I feel supported," virtual opportunities, online resources, great working conditions, and teacher recognition were also positives that were noted. And maintenance services noted that they appreciated their new uniforms. So we were happy to see that. Under grows, the highest agreement areas included inadequate compensation with 41 participants in agreement, and again, some of these meetings were before we received our bonuses and our increases. 25 individuals agreed that job descriptions needed to be more accurately matched to job titles, pay steps not accurately reflecting experience, the change to next year's school calendar, and the need to limit meetings and activities that impede upon planning and instructional time were also topics that were categories under grows. And here are some samplings of the comments made either by groups or, again, by individual feedback forms regarding the areas of improvement. Compensation obviously was a primary focus along with contracted time, mandatory overtime, comments such as too many initiatives, lowering class sizes, work demands, collective bargaining was mentioned by a few attendees, as well as increasing tuition reimbursement. The performance management system, which is called TalentEd, the redundancy of the online mandatory training, as well as the applicant tracking system were mentioned. Some participants objected to HR's involvement in this feedback process in general. They weren't too happy to see employee relations in there at some points. Concerns about copiers not working, paper rationing, school safety incentives for veterans, wellness, and staff days were also in the discussions. During the October 25th presentation, the proposed timeline was shared. As you can see, we're about halfway through that timeline. With all the employee meetings held and the superintendent's 23-24 estimate of needs presented, the next step is to assess the enhancements made to the Employee Input Process and decide how to move forward. When you compare this feedback with that obtained by the last Employee Input Web-Based Survey in February 2022, the findings are consistent. The web-based survey, which had 4,964 participants, and again, that's compared to the 97 participants in the meetings, they both identified salary as one of the overriding concerns. Benefits had a strong second on the 2022 survey. However, it did shift quite a bit once the health insurance premiums were addressed this year. So we saw more of a positive note on that when we had the meetings. The Employee Input Meetings gave us the same responses as previous climate surveys had, last year's compensation survey, and the employee exit surveys. The involvement of our stakeholders in continuous improvement is paramount to the success of our school division. Leadership will continue to review and address the issues shared by employees. Finally, we will continue to communicate these initiatives and outcomes with our stakeholders. So based on this information that we presented today, we are asking that the School Board to provide your feedback regarding whether the Enhanced Employee Input Meetings should continue, be modified, or discontinued based on the data we received. And with that, this concludes the presentation, and Mrs. Woodhouse and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Anderson?
Being that last year was the year we did Employee Input, and it would have been a year without a survey, correct?
2022, February 2022, we did the survey, and then we started the meetings in November of 2022. So it wasn't quite a year between the survey and when the meetings began.
So would this be the year that you normally would do surveys?
No, 2023 is not a survey year. 2024 will be the next survey year. It's typically done in, I believe, February, March timeframe for that.
So February of 2024?
Yes.
Coming up?
Yes.
This coming school year, next coming?
Correct.
Next year's. Okay, so that was kind of my point. So I would, my personal feeling is that I would suggest we continue with surveys this coming spring, early spring, February, but possibly do surveys maybe, I'm thinking maybe more in the fall, to be able to get input in case we need to allow for that input as part of the CION. For, I mean, we might not have time to analyze it for this coming CION that starts in January, February, March, but if you do a survey in February, obviously, none of that is going to have input into the CION for this coming, next year's. So my suggestion would be do a survey in the fall. We could take it into consideration. It might not be in time to be able to implement budgetary parts of it to go into the CION, but it could be something to give us more light in, you know, how we vote on issues that have to do with the CION.
And we can certainly take that into consideration and make those changes. As I mentioned before, we do have the every other year piece of it because it gives us time to not only gather the information but to analyze it. We go line by line, actually, through those surveys and pulls, we pull the information, get it to the appropriate team members, the different chiefs in their areas to address, come up with a timeline of action and to get that going. So that's why we have that every other year, but we certainly can look at moving those dates.
Just a suggestion. The other thing is to continue to reiterate to people that this, that the survey is anonymous. We still have people who don't believe that, no matter what. They think that no matter what, if you do something online, they're going to be able to trace it back to them. But we need to continue to reiterate that, to message out to the staff and let them know, hey, we want your input. We want to hear from you. We realize we had input meetings that were in-person last year, and it took time away from them, that maybe they couldn't, you know, participate. But the survey is something that they can do on their own computers, either at home or even at school after instruction hours, so.
And we'll continue to do that. Dr. Bannacki is excellent in when they present those surveys to staff to complete. I know it's the anonymous piece of it. I know it's the anonymous piece of it, and the data-driven results of it are emphasized when she puts that out. But of course, we'll continue to let employees know that their individual feedback, although received, is not directed back to them.
So, and the good news is, we are able, we've been able to obtain and get this budget passed this past a couple of weeks ago. The city council did approve the budget that we sent forward to them. And so we might have some positive feedback that we want to hear as soon as possible. We need to hear that we're doing a good job from our constituents. They need, I mean, many people have let me know personally, but, you know, I think a survey asking, you know, if they feel that the salary, we made a lot of adjustments in the salary scale, and if that, that would definitely go a long way to prove that we're doing, we're on the right track, so, thank you.
And if I could add, Ms. Anderson, the same has been voiced to HR. Very seldom do we receive that many happy phone calls and emails, and I will tell you, we've received in abundance. And so our employees have been very appreciative of what the school board has put forth as the new operating budget, so we thank you for that.
Thank you.
Ms. Manning?
So I'm not clear on when the surveys are done, because I thought I heard you say in the fall, but this says the spring, but input?
The input meetings took place this last fall.
The surveys?
Right, the bi-annual surveys done every other February, so we had one in two thousand and twenty-two, and then we'll have another one in two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, perfect. And the employee input meetings, I have the dates of when you've done them. When do you propose, if we say that this is great, we want you to continue? Do you propose doing these every other year also, or how often?
It would really be up to you as school board members to tell us what direction you want us to go in, whether you want to do it alternating years, or do you feel that the survey and the other means of getting input from employees is adequate? Really, that would be up to you, and then we would follow your lead and do a timeline based on that.
Okay, do you feel that the two hundred and eight employees was, I mean, is that kind of what you were expecting? Were you expecting more or less?
Well, it had been at least fourteen years since we'd had in-person meetings, so we really weren't sure what to expect. That's why we did have a hundred and fifty seats available, and again, two hundred for virtual in anticipation of having that possibility. But once, you know, the first meeting occurred, we saw that it was low turnout. And again, I think much of that is because people do feel heard by the school board and by this administration. We do have so many avenues for employees to give input. It's really impressive from an employee standpoint of how many different ways employees can give us their feedback. So I think that's why it was a lower turnover, turnout than we thought initially it might be.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Martin?
I'm looking at the numbers for the face-to-face and the virtual meetings, and I looked at the two thousand and twenty-two calendar. Are you planning on changing anything here? It looks like a significant number of people register and then decide not to come. Maybe that had to do with the, how close it was to Thanksgiving holiday, stress and all that. Is there a plan to change some of this? Because it looks like your January meetings get pretty high attendance.
We, this was approved by the school board last fall and October. That's why it started in November. So we certainly, if that is the direction you want to go in, we would probably start meetings much sooner. We were looking, initially, we were looking at in the end of September, October timeframe to do the beginning of meetings and have a longer stretch of time for meetings to occur. This year, we were just doing a trial basis to see what the turnout was going to be and see what the demand was. So it was a more condensed timeframe.
Okay, I would recommend doing some meetings in October. That would give our brand-new employees, you know, at least a month under their belt of being in a building. And then it's not pushing up against that holiday week.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
I have a question too. You said that the survey will be this coming year, two thousand and twenty-four?
Yes, February to March. I'm not quite sure when it comes out, but in that timeframe of two thousand and twenty-four.
Is there a way, you know, I know you make up the survey questions, is there a way to put in that survey people's feelings about this past, your voice one that we had? I mean, because you're saying you felt like it was good, you know, in one way it was good that there weren't that many people because they have so many avenues. So do you think maybe there's a way we can put in that survey something that asks them how they feel? Was this helpful? Do they feel it is needed? Or do, you know, something that don't, not leading them into it, but something that will give them the opportunity to say these are better ways to be able to share than having the in-person. I mean, because I've been around a long time, and I remember the times we used to have them, and I used to hear, you know. And I think now, like some of us have said, and like you're saying, people feel like their voices are being heard more than they've ever been heard before. I certainly do, I certainly do, you know. And not because I'm sitting on the school board, but seeing what's been offered compared to what was offered in the past when I was in the classroom. So I think we need to maybe hear back from our employees too. So somehow put some kind of question or two about that and get their feedback.
And there is a section of leadership and communication that that would fit in. And so that would be, I don't want to speak for Dr. Bannacki, but that could be added.
I mean, I think it's important that we make a decision, but I think it's important that we make the decision based on what our employees are saying as well. You know, if they're saying, you know, we're just not going to be able to go, it's easier to use this instead of going and what you've got in place, I think we need to hear from them.
Right. And Dr. Bannacki's group does the survey, so we will work with them to make sure that the survey has any items that you deem, you know, needed on the, and we also have narrative sections on each section of the survey. And people do fill those out, and administration does review all of those. Those, I can tell you from doing it, they review every single comment that is made on those surveys.
Well, I certainly believe that because I don't like to not hear what people have to say. I don't care if I like it or not. I still want to, I want to see what they're writing down.
Yes.
You know, so I'm sure you guys do too. That's where we learn. Yes, Ms. Anderson?
So if we, if you did a couple of meetings in October, is there a reason why you couldn't still do the survey in February?
No, we would do the survey in February unless you want to do something drastically different, not do surveys. The survey, and again, I don't want to speak for Dr. Bannacki, but the survey is, the survey is very effective.
I wonder, I really didn't catch it, and so Ms. Martin made the comment about, you know, when we had those, it was in November, it started close to the holiday time, you know, when people are starting to start thinking about their valuable time and getting ready for the holidays, that type of thing. So I'm wondering if maybe sometime in October would be a couple of meetings, not, maybe not four, but, you know, maybe a Zoom meeting and then an in-person meeting, since you might anticipate only, you know, less than fifty people, but still give the opportunity for in-person input. And then go ahead with the survey in February, because obviously in the past, it shows that, you know, more people participate in that. We want to hear from everyone, so I don't see any reason why we wouldn't at least try to get some personal input.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mrs. Rogen and Mrs. Woodhouse. So we're on equity update. Welcome, Mr. Ty Harris, our Director of the Office for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion.
Good evening. Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chairwoman Weems, members of the board, both present and on Zoom. And it is my honor and a privilege to provide an update on the division's educational equity plan. Before I begin, however, I'd like to recognize the work of my administrative assistant, Jody Blafus. She's pictured here. This is at the Care Fair last fall. Interestingly enough, this was the very first event I attended in my official capacity as Director of DEI. And for the first few months, it was just Jody and I. While all my attention was on the equity plan development, Jody single-handedly ran just about everything else for a while. Since then, she has continued to be the backbone of our office. Jody is retiring after twenty-nine years of service to VB CPS. And I just want to take an opportunity to publicly thank her for assisting us. The purpose of this update is to provide you, the school board, with information towards the progress made implementing the equity plan. This presentation highlights activities that have been completed between November of two thousand and twenty-two and May of two thousand and twenty-three. Regular reporting is a key requirement for Goal Three in the superintendent's evaluation. It is also an important part of establishing and maintaining transparency of and for the great work happening in our division involving equity-related activities. I plan to provide another update to the school board later this fall. So what do we mean by equity? Typically, I don't read slides verbatim, but I think it's really important to frame this discussion around what we're about. In VB CPS, equity means fostering a barrier-free environment whereby all students have the opportunity to benefit from the establishment of high standards and the provision of access, support, effective and inclusive learning environments, and resources required for high-quality education. I'd like to think that the board, our students and staff, their families, and the greater community have seen evidence of our desire to create opportunities that align with this definition. It would help that I, you got me? Perfect. Got me. All right. A quick review of how we got here. In November two thousand and nineteen, the school board adopted, sorry, the division's five-year strategic framework, Compass to two thousand and twenty-five. Equity emphases are part of each of the six goals in the framework. In September two thousand and twenty, the school board adopted an educational equity policy to further reinforce the division's commitment to equity. This policy called for an equity assessment to identify opportunities for improvement and a plan for implementing those findings. In October of two thousand and twenty-two, the school board unanimously adopted the educational equity plan to solidify the division's commitment to equity and establish a roadmap for improvement and continued growth. The equity plan is tightly aligned with Compass to two thousand and twenty-five. It includes activities that run through the spring of two thousand and twenty-five to correspond with the division's strategic planning cycle. While this plan is very intensive, with over eighty action steps to be taken, we are confident that we will reach our goals. We set the bar high because that is what our students deserve. Recognizing the importance of this work, we want to be deliberate with our approach. With any plan for improvement, it is important to understand where you are, what is working, what needs to be changed. This spring, we are focusing on that self-evaluation. While the Office for DEI leads the equity work, there would be no plan without collaboration from every department in VB CPS. Right after the plan was approved, senior staff and key directors met to identify the roles that each office needed to play to ensure success for every action item. We utilized a responsibility matrix, which allowed everyone to see who was responsible, accountable, needed to be consulted, or just informed. From there, a planner was created, which allows us to track progress towards completing goals, but more importantly, provide collaborators with a platform to see who else is working on the same item in their respective office and communicate without having to set up a bunch of meetings. We have monthly check-ins to report on progress and discuss any challenges folks are having. Additionally, my coordinator, Meredith Hobson, and I meet one-on-one with departments to support them. Goal one of the equity plan is educational excellence. The equity assessment priority is to ensure diverse cultures and perspectives are positively represented in the curriculum. To date, staff at all three levels, elementary, middle, and high school, have reviewed multicultural materials and offered recommendations for increasing the number and quality of those resources. Our office is collaborating with others to create a screening tool to use when adopting new resources and materials into the culturally responsive stockpile, which mirrors the process used to review and build the social-emotional learning, or SEL, stockpile. It is important that our teachers see a consistent structure when navigating the tools and resources meant to support their instruction. During league meetings, the Department of Teaching and Learning, DETAL, the Office of Programs for Exceptional Children, OPEC, and the Office of Student Support Services, this is what they are, have presented on engaging and research-based practices, as well as provided several observation feedback professional learning sessions to include alignment to such practices. This fall, a new cohort of design fellows will convene to develop a cultural competency model to expand upon the one that is provided by the State Department of Education. Through conversations with staff, it has been determined that they need and want more comprehensive, a more comprehensive understanding of cultural competency. Goal two is student well-being. The equity assessment priority is to create an environment where all students feel safe, welcome, and included at school. Additionally, we want to address student discipline disparities. Mentoring can have a profound impact on the well-being of a child, so we first determine what we mean when we say mentoring. In VB CPS, mentoring is pairing students with an older peer or adult volunteer who acts as a positive role model for the purpose of building confidence in relationships, developing resilience and character, and raising aspirations. For some of our secondary students, there may also be a focus on career development. We enjoyed another year of student and family engagement events meant to help participants feel welcome and valued. The African-American Mail Summit and Beach Girls Rock, each with around three hundred participants. While these events are meant for students to have fun, they're also designed to build student agency, to overcome challenges, advocate for self, and enjoy a sense of belonging amongst peers. These activities also have a strong parent offering, and we've received excellent feedback on. This year, we were fortunate to be able to support the Season for Nonviolence by hosting a post-term poetry contest. And that picture is from the celebration we held at Renaissance Academy. We recognize that moving from one setting to another can be a difficult time for any student. But transitions for our students with disabilities has to be a focus. Ensuring there is a clear understanding of the child's needs will set them up for success in their new setting. Once in their respective building, it is critical for students with disabilities to be in their optimal learning environment. OPEC has prepared least restrictive environment, or LRE, data sheets for each school so they may see the percentage of students that are properly placed according to LRE guidelines. There will be an expectation that this data is considered when scheduling and providing supports for our students with disabilities. To show our commitment to supporting division initiatives, DEI will be supporting two stipend-opportunity champion positions at each high school to supervise equal-opportunity schools and a student coalition convened to lend student voice around topics involving equity, social-emotional learning, and mental health. Goal three is student ownership of learning. The equity assessment priority is to increase access to and success in rigorous learning opportunities for all students. This has been one of the primary goals for senior staff this year. We start by defining what we mean by rigorous and what these learning opportunities look like, then moving the needle on participation in these courses by traditionally marginalized subgroups to include students with disabilities, students of color, English learners, and students with low socioeconomic status. Secondary principals have been heavily involved in these discussions as well. We've been monitoring progress in this area and have identified equal-opportunity schools as a research-backed approach to improving access and participation in AP courses. With support from the aforementioned opportunity champions, all of the high schools in VB CPS will be able to benefit from the supports provided by the EOS framework. At the elementary and middle school levels, students will have access to specially-designed summer learning students will have access to specially-designed summer learning programs. Goal Four is an exemplary diversified workforce. The Equity Assessment Priority is to recruit, retain, and promote a workforce representative of the diverse student population. Human Resource, the Human Resources Department and the Office of Professional Growth and Innovation have developed a stay interview process. Stay interviews have been shown to have a significant impact on teacher retention as they provide insight on what motivates staff to stay with the Division. Teacher involvement and recruiting efforts also has a positive impact on attracting and retaining staff. While school divisions across the country have struggled to fill positions, our Human Resources Department has demonstrated a willingness to think outside the box, and were able to hire 23 teachers from the Philippines to fill high-need areas. Goal Five is mutually supportive partnerships. The Equity Assessment Priority is to increase opportunities for stakeholders to be informed and involved. Our Office of Family and Community Engagement, FACE, is doing a wonderful job. Work that is being spearheaded by Dr. Alexander and the FACE team includes adopting Salesforce as our, as our community partnership database. This will assist in categorizing, recognizing, and directing community partners to specific school locations based upon need. Partnering with Princess Anne YMCA to expand and enhance supplies and resources to the community through Restock and Roll Event. And increasing the Virginia Beach Ed Foundation A-plus grant applications which support innovation in the classroom. I mentioned Beach Girls Rock earlier, but wanted to highlight the fact here that we hosted our spring event on ODU's main campus for the first time. Participants got a chance to attend sessions in actual classrooms and even eat lunch in the cafeteria. I'd like to thank Transportation for their assistance as they were able to arrange buses to pick up families at four sites across the city. We are planning to keep the momentum growing by introducing workshops to be held throughout the year and involving Norfolk State in future endeavors. Goal Six is organizational effectiveness and efficiency. The Equity Assessment Priority is to ensure equitable allocation of resources across schools and students. Data-driven decision-making is a strong component of success in any effective organization. In thinking about the Equity Plan, we've created these action steps. They are public, presented in the same way that they are approved by the School Board. We are now developing a data dashboard to serve as a one-stop shop for anyone wanting to see what we see when making some of these key decisions. In January, Dr. Bannick shared with you the updated navigational markers for the Strategic Action Plan. That update included some of the specific equity-related metrics that we are tracking. We are always looking for ways to best leverage our resources to support students and staff. That is an ongoing thing. Additionally, we are constantly seeking ways to use data to impact instruction. Currently, we are looking to extend capabilities within Synergy to allow teachers and administrators to track interactions with and amongst students for the purpose of getting ahead of potential negative situations. To be clear, we already use Synergy. We are just unlocking some additional features that will help us be more effective. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Martin.
Mr. Harris, I, on Slide Nine, where you show your, you're showing growth in AP enrollment, are you also tracking dual enrollment?
Yes, ma'am. We, we track dual enrollment.
As well. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Manny.
Can you tell me a little bit more about the Synergy situation? Where you said you can track discipline. Is that what, the expansion of the Synergy program? Can you just tell me a little more about that? It was the last slide. I'm just, what, what does that look like? Is that like we're inputting referrals into there? Are, you know, is this extra work for teachers?
So can you?
The last slide that he just mentioned, it says next steps, expansion of Synergy LMS. And he mentioned that it was tracking, trying to help with discipline issues.
So as part of our process in terms of looking to determine how we provide support with our SRT process is to look at, there's a module with that makes tracking student referrals and discipline and the interventions that we take place a lot easier for our staff. So right now, that process is not as efficient as it could be. So right now, we're looking at expanding that opportunity for our schools to be able to better track that system within the context of Synergy. So it's a module within the context of Synergy.
Okay. So I just, what I want to make sure is that it's not something extra for our teachers to do. Is it replacing something?
Make them a lot easier. And yes, it will replace something that we have that's not readily usable. Well, it's not as easy to use.
Okay. Thank you.
You're certainly welcome.
Ms. Brown.
Okay. So this is sort of, kind of off of her question. So on Slide Eight, when you were talking about equity assessment priorities, you talked about addressing student discipline disparities. Is that data that we have available for us to get?
You're, yes, it is. And I believe you're going to get an update in July.
And is that something that is broken down on a school-to-school basis as well? Okay.
Yes, Ms. Brown. So I think a key part of that disparity is it's not just talking about the student in general. Sometimes we're seeing that by school level. We're seeing on a variety of events, location of incidents. We do a pretty deep dive in what might be the causes of those behaviors that we're seeing. Sometimes we overgeneralize, like behaviors are happening everywhere, and that's not always the case. So we do a dive on that. We're going to give you a deep update in the retreat this summer. So we look at where do we see the disparities? And how are we providing resources to assist in responding to those disparities?
Okay, great. Thank you. I look forward to that.
Yep. You're welcome.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Harris. That was a great presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
And I have to say, whoever did not get a chance to go to the Renaissance for your, would, would you call it again, your?
That's the Season for Nonviolence.
That was fantastic. It was very good. Thank you.
All right, good.
PPEA interim agreement update. Welcome, Ms. Ingram.
Thank you, Chair Riggs, Vice Chair Wiens, members of the Board, and Dr. Spence. As we had mentioned when, the last time we gave you an update, on April 4th, we will continue to update on the PPEA interim agreement process, which is for design services of three replacement schools. So as you can see in front of you, you have, this is a timeline of the work to be done in the interim agreement. We are currently at May 23rd, the School Board Workshop, looking at educational specifications and where we are. Prior to this occurring, we had a number of focus group interviews as well as educational specification meetings, which we'll talk a little bit more about in the following slides. Looking forward, actually, this week, we start our stakeholder meetings of design workshops. We'll have that until June, both in stakeholder meetings and public community meetings. We'll then, after the summer, look at that conceptual design again, the preferred conceptual design, and then come back to the Board. And it's our plan to also come back to City Council at the informal session as we get these conceptual designs drafted. After that, in October, November, we'll look at final schematic designs, again, coming back to the Board and then to City Council in an informal session when that work is completed. And then looking right before budget season at our project financing plan with budget leadership from both School Board and City Council. We then in February, again, right around budget season, will have a guaranteed maximum price for all the work that has been done and a proposed comprehensive agreement for both the Board and City Council to consider for action. So again, at the start of this process, we've had a couple of approved directives, both from the School Board and City Council. At the School Board level, we've added into our CIP documents the intention to find efficiencies of size and scale during the design work that we're currently doing now. For City Council, we had looked at, it was requested that we include some scalable options so that that, for transparency, so that they can kind of see, you know, where we have some additions and deletions in terms of the programs that we're looking at in our designs. So again, we have two meeting types. So we have our Planning Advisory Team meetings, and then we have our Public Community meetings. For Meeting Type One, we've had a number of organizations engage. These are our Planning Advisory Team meetings. Ms. Riggs did speak about later in action today, we'll have a change in School Board. And these are folks who, stakeholders, community organizations, and subject matter experts that are invited to these meetings. We've had great attendance. We've had VB school cities, VB CPS school staff, so principal, teachers, and other support staff at the school level. VB CPS administration from the Departments of School Division Services, school leadership, teaching and learning, budget, technology, and communications and community engagement, and as well as CVB administration. So Virginia Beach Police Department, Parks and Recreation, Planning, Public Works, Public Utilities, and Cultural Affairs. So really, have been looking at both the school and city side administratively and have engaged those stakeholders. And also other organizations, well, students and parents are one of our very important stakeholders as well. We've had a number come to several meetings. Historians, CHKD, some of our partners, environmental groups, the CBDA, which is right adjacent to Princess Anne High School, civic leagues, and other community organizations, as well as higher education and public health have been engaged in this process. And we want to thank all of those stakeholders for their attendance. Again, during the public advisory team meetings, we also look to have our elected officials be a part of this process. So we have two School Board members and two City Council members appointed by team. You can see there the, the members for Princess Anne High School, Williams Bayside Sixth Grade and Bayside High School. As Ms. Riggs mentioned today, there will be action taking on possibly replacing someone at the Williams Elementary School Bayside Sixth Grade Planning Advisory Team meeting. So again, what we've done, starting this process, is really looking at focus group interviews. We have had over 75 listening sessions with various stakeholders. This is prior to our public community meetings, just to gather information and to understand the strategic plan for VB CPS, as well as program requirements. Again, our directive was to meet all the program needs that the School Division has for these three schools. And what comes out of that again is Division-wide special needs programs. There's been a lot of conversation in that in, in terms of the increase in special education services needed. Academy-based programs, as you know, two of our high schools have academies. So Princess Anne High School has the IB program in addition to the Special Education Center for the District at the high school level. And Bayside High School has the Health Sciences Academy, which has been really helpful, talking about that in relationship to CTE, Technical Education. Individualized and personalized learning. And there's been a lot of discussion about that in terms of the ability for students to collaborate with one another, be able to share things out, and be able to kind of work to their, to their interest within the programs that are there. Again, career and technical education. I know the task force has just started with the city in terms of technical education. And we're looking at that in view of these three schools and how that might work. Princess Anne High School and Bayside High School will have the full gamut of electives. Williams Bayside Sixth, we have the Sixth Grade has the career and technical education. And we're looking and talking to, you know, our folks in teaching and learning and technical education to see if maybe the fifth graders can also help to collaborate with that in terms of career and technical education in that shared campus of Williams Elementary School Bayside Sixth, seeing what opportunities might exist for that. And then also community partnerships. There's been a lot of conversation on schools' use outside of school hours as well. Not just Parks and Recreation for after-school hours, sporting events, but also other community needs that the community might have. As I mentioned, we've engaged VVPD and the Crime Prevention through Environmental Design is SEPTED. And we are looking at that in terms of our design, not only for keeping it safe, but also for, you know, being able to utilize areas of the buildings for any needed community partnerships for those designs. So some design parameters here in front of you, and we've looked at this before. These are, as we get informed, we're understanding more information. So Princess Anne High School, we're planning for 1,700 students. That would be 1,550 students, both zoned as their home school to Princess Anne High School, and then academy students attending the IB program. And then in an additional 150 students attending the district-wide sped, which we call the West Wing currently. Reason we are breaking those out is they have different teacher-to-student ratio, where you might have at the high school level, numbers up with a 20 to 1, up to 28 to 1. At the district-wide sped level, you're really looking at like a 10 to 1 ratio. So just understanding the difference of needs of those two different populations. Again, as I mentioned, we have the IB program at Princess Anne High School, the Special Education Center, but there's also the NJRTC program that is housed there that actually pulls from both Princess Anne High School and Bayside High School. The hybrid schedule has been very useful, as we're learning from our stakeholders, that, you know, it allowed students the ability to have more electives available in their schedule, which has been wonderful. And then also considering one lunch, scheduling for food services. The next school, Williams Elementary School and Bayside Sixth, we're planning for 850 students. This broken down would be 450 students in grades four through five and roughly 400 students in grade six. Due to their location, they also have a lower student-to-teacher ratio, roughly around 20 to 1, that we're currently planning for. And again, this is a replacement of the two standalone schools. You can see them below, on, on your screen, below the, this table. And they will both move to Williams Elementary School campus. So we will have, Bayside Sixth Grade will get demolished, and we will have excess property there. It's important to note that Bayside Sixth Grade Campus has earned a distinction of the 2223 National ESAA Distinguished School. That's really important and really showing that the program there that's being worked on is being really effective for those students. So trying to glean through design, you know, the kind of things that they're doing in order to get that recognition and ensure that the new design will, will help to foster more of that. And then one of the things that's been added here, I don't have it on this slide, but the 850 students could possibly become 1,000 students. Despite the fact that this is a fourth, fifth, sixth grade building, which is more attuned to our middle school population, we currently serve early childhood special education, which is a half-day program for our preschool ages two, three, and four, as well as pre-K VPI at Williams Elementary School. This space is at a premium, and staffing is always difficult. These students, the ECSE students need to be served. Once they qualify for the program, we have to serve them and transport them. So one of the things that we've been looking at with this, do these preschool grade levels, is it appropriate for them to be at the fourth, fifth, sixth grade campus? Or what has come up as discussion, you know, is there the opportunity through this PPEA to have an ECS center created? This has been discussion, discussed by the School Division for several years. And what this would help with is transportation logistics in terms of making sure if, you know, you have a student all the way down at Creed's Elementary School, and if you only have space over at Hermitage, you have a more central location closer to 264 for transportation purposes, where you have a shorter bus ride. And then also staffing purposes. It's difficult to staff these, these programs. And also staff collaboration. There are often, you know, one or two sections at a school on their own, and there's a lot of unique opportunities for staff collaboration if a center was to be designed. So we're looking to see, this would be 40 additional classrooms if it's ECSE alone. That population has grown since September 30 from 482 students to 600 students, right at 599. So it's increased over 100 students just over the several months. And so trying to see if that can fit with the other two schools at Williams Elementary School. And then we're also looking And then we're also looking at the Bayside 6th Grade Campus. Again, still with the goal of having that excess property available, should it be needed by the community? You know, is there a way to add that adjacent to Pembroke Elementary School? And so we'll be looking at that as a scalable option for these schools and talking to the community about it. We really, for this school, will be focused on the 4th, 5th, 6th grade program, but that is an important component that has come up as a program, programmatic need that we'll also look at as a scalable option for, through the PPEA. And then Bayside High School, so with 1,900 students as the design parameter, they have the IB, the Health Science Academy program there, also with the hybrid schedule, which they're seeing more students have the opportunity to take additional electives. Again, same thing as Princess Anne High School, we're also looking at the one lunch for food services. And in addition, as many of you know, Bayside High School would be a prototype for design for future schools. We have a couple in the modernization program already slated in the CIP, Green Run High School, Kempsville High School, and First Colonial High School. Okay, so again, we've just conducted and finished, completed from April to May our educational specification meetings. This is a really energetic student from Princess Anne High School here showing us some of the learning experiences and adjacencies that would be helpful for them with a new design. We've also gone through and worked in small groups and come up with several boards and several ideas that help to inform our design team of not just programmatic needs, but learning experiences, needs, adjacency needs. And this helps to inform us also of the efficiencies that we'll be looking at during the design as well. So some of the things we've had to remember while we're doing this, again, program requirements are often discussed, but also building this building for 100 years. So we're not just talking 21st century learning, so also 22nd century learning, and what these spaces can do in order to be flexible as technology and education might change over the next 100 years. And again, they've been very well attended. We've had six stakeholder meetings for educational specification programs, and then, and then two public community meetings, which were also well-attended. So as I mentioned, we had the two meeting types. So meeting type two are our public community meetings, and this is open to anyone in the general public. So our communications and community engagement has been very helpful in terms of getting the word out about these public community meetings. We've, as I mentioned, for the educational specifications progress, we've had two. We're looking next week to have three more. So May 30th will be Williams Bayside 6th, and this will be looking at conceptual designs. May 31st will be Bayside High School, and June 1st would be Princess Anne High School. So please feel free to let your friends know, anyone interested in the process, they're welcome to attend all three of those meetings next week or just one. You know, the more input we get, the, the better we are prepared. And then as we move forward, as I mentioned, we'll still have those stakeholder meetings, but we also, along with the stakeholder meetings, as we go into the report out of conceptual designs after summer, we'll have another series of these public community meetings for that purpose from September 12th to 14th. And then as we look at final schematic design in that process, for informing that process, we'll have several meetings that are open to the public from October 23rd to October 26th. So again, please feel free to spread the word about these public community meetings. So again, as we proceed from May through June, we actually have two meetings tomorrow and one on the 25th. We are working now in design workshops. So we'll be looking at some of those programs that we've already talked about and the adjacencies we've talked about, and really start to, start working in small groups to create a more of a building out of those components. We, again, will have two sets of the planning advisory team meetings, one of the public community meeting for each school project. We then look forward after the summer to have another set of meetings in September and then come back to the board between September and October to call out at a school board workshop and hopefully also at city council. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
So you said that the meetings have been well-attended?
Yes.
Can you give us a little idea of, you know, how many are, you know?
So most of the rooms have been full. There are sometimes where attendance has, I would say we probably have roughly 50, 50 or so attending. That's also including staff, but what I'm really happy with is the breadth of attendance too. You know, it's not just school staff or, you know, city staff, it's also other stakeholders in the community. We've had a lot of higher education involved as well, VVPD, planning, Parks and Rec. So it's really been a really wide gamut. We also, something I didn't mention with the focus group interviews, we've had a series of student focus group interviews as well, and they've come up with some great ideas in, in terms of the process as well, which helped us to provide this information to our organizations, one of which was a really important, our historical aspect too, of the buildings in this area. So it's been really helpful to have a great wide breadth of interpretations of design needs, if that makes sense. Yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Manny.
Two questions. The ECSE, and that's early childhood special education for members of the public that may not know what that is. So this is the first time I'm hearing this, maybe I've missed it in the past, that we would be looking to move all of our ECSE students there?
Yes. So other areas do this. I believe Norfolk has a center. And again, you know, as you know, staffing is definitely difficult at, at the school level, but this is particularly difficult. You're dealing with two-year-olds, three-year-olds, and four-year-olds that are, have, have some disabilities. So the center would help to, not only help the students or transportation to have more of that community and collaboration, and to be able to group different disabilities together, but also have the collaboration of staff as well, and be able to pair up staff with different needs of different age groups or disability levels.
Yeah, I see, definitely see some positive aspects of that, but is that a programmatic change that the board would need to approve?
Yes, and the board would be asked to consider that as one of the options during the PPEA process.
Okay, so, because I'm just thinking, if we're planning for this in the design, it seems like we should be doing that now rather than later.
So the intention, well, we're not planning for it in design, we're planning to bring it forward as, as one of the scalable options that you all can consider. So then we would need to have the conversation at that point of, so if this option is going to cost this much money, is that something we should pursue?
Okay, thank you.
And we'd have a better idea of what that finance picture would look like because we would bring it forward as part of the PPEA package.
And then what the impact would be on the other schools where we're removing the children as well?
That's right.
Yeah, okay. And then just the other question, what has been the online response rate that we've been getting?
I think we're, we have, our comment cards are online as well, and we've gotten many responses from those. I believe we're upwards of 50. I don't have the exact numbers right now, but it's been very visited pretty often. And we have on there, each separate project with their parameters, we have pictures up and things like that, just to follow along. So anyone in the public who would like to follow along the process and can't make a public meeting, please visit the website. It's vbschoolsofthefuture.com.
Yeah, the website's very helpful. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
I, I'd like to thank everyone on the school board for their support as well, attending these meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. So we are now ready to move on to our, we have, we really don't have enough time to do any more closed session. Do we, do we have more closed tonight, Ms. Lynetti, that you want to discuss? It can wait? Okay. All right, we, we okay with that? So we get six extra minutes, you guys? So we're going to go to our recess now, and...